Our meeting to order tonight for the Brentwood School Board. It is Monday, August 3rd, 2020. Our meeting tonight is really about the beginning of the meeting to listen and learn to how parents and residents are feeling about our children returning to school this fall. I want to personally take the time to thank the senior leadership team for their to be with us on this call. I know you're busy. This is your evening too. And I know we have a lot of schools in the district and you're personally taking the time to listen to every parent, every board personally. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate the fact that your plans have been so fluid and you have been so open to feedback. I know this may take a couple of minutes, but many of the people on the call may not know everyone that's on the call. And even though we have a name, doesn't necessarily tell your position or your background. So if you don't mind, I kind of just quickly want to go around the room so that people know who is on the call. And I don't know if, I'm thinking maybe I should just go around and just say to each person who's next on my screen, because I'm sure it's different on everyone else's screen. Chris, do you want to introduce yourself?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Chris Andruski. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction in SAU 16, and I'm also the Superintendent Designee for Brentwood.
And I don't know if David Ryan needs an introduction, do you?
Yeah, believe me. I'm David Ryan. I'm the Superintendent of Schools in SAU 16.
Alan?
Hi, I'm Alan Riska. I'm the Assistant Director of Student Services.
Rebecca?
Hi, I'm Rebecca Doucette, the school nurse at Swayze.
Brian?
Hi, I'm Brian Duffy. I'm a member of the Brentwood Swayze School Board.
Scott?
I'm Scott Tenney. I'm the Vice Chair of the Brentwood School Board.
Bad?
Bad Riley, Member of Brentwood School Board.
Molly?
I'm Molly O'Keefe. I'm the Director of Finance of SAU 16.
Ron?
Hi, everybody. Ron Q, Principal Swayze.
Helen?
Good evening. I'm Helen Rist. I'm the Director of Student Services for the SAU.
Tom?
Hey, everybody. I'm Tom Campbell. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources.
Esther? Oh, you're on mute, Esther.
Hi, everyone. I'm the Associate Superintendent of Schools here in SAU 16. Happy to be here tonight.
Michelle?
Good evening, everyone. I'm the Assistant Director of Finance at SAU 16.
Kate?
Hi, I'm Catherine Gallo. I'm the Curriculum Coordinator at Swayze Central School.
Allison?
We're at the Brentwood School Board.
And we missed a little bit. So that is Allison Higgins of the Brentwood School Board. And then you know me, I'm Melissa Litchfield, Chair of the Brentwood School Board. So what we'd like to do is, again, we just want to take the time to listen and learn to how everyone is feeling. I'm going to start with Chris and/or David and see if there's anything that you would like to share as we begin this meeting. And then what I would like to do is go ahead. If anyone has any questions, please put them under the chat section on the Zoom call or the webinar, and I will go ahead and I will ask those questions. I will do my best to group them together. I will do my best just to be aware of your time. If questions start to get redundant, probably at that point, it will be a good time for us to end and move on to other school board business. I'm trying to think. I think that covers everything. But just anything that you have to say, please go ahead, put it in the chat section. If it's very personal about your family directly, I would just ask that you please go ahead and email maybe David Ryan or Ron Q about that versus us getting into any personal situations on this webinar. But David or Chris, would you like to start with anything?
Chris, do you want me to take it away?
Yeah, well done, Melissa. Let's have Dave start with the presentation.
So I'm going to go back to that. I'm just going to share this image just because even though it is not the latest draft, it's draft number two. I'm just going to bring this up to get people familiar with it. This is our draft number two. You're a draft number three that is essentially going to change of this information here on page five and some of this information here on page six. We have had the pleasure of delivering this presentation at both the Joint Board Meeting, which is all of our school board members from all of our school districts, and we had on July 20th. And I think that talked about four hours and 20 minutes. It was the first time that we had been able to talk publicly about what we had been working on and developing our plan for a back to school or return to school. This work's been really hard for a lot of people, particularly our parents and our staff members, because the unknown is probably the most feared thing when it comes to your children. We totally empathize and understand that, and we respect that. We also have children of our own who are also in uncertain times, so we're all in this boat together. And as a community of seven school districts, we are going to find a way to get through whatever it is that we have to get through for however long it is going to take us. And we can't make decisions that you get us to be able to work on some form of structure guidance for our school staff members to put together a detailed plan locally. You'll be able to then follow. Some of the items on this page here, page under Teaching and Learning, Facilities, Transportation, School Schedules, those are the four areas that most likely will be changing over the next week to 10 days. We want to be able to come back next week with the Swayze School Board and share more detailed plans about what is it going to look like on a school day, whether you choose to have your child attend remotely or in person. Is it a half, a three quarter, a full day, an alternating day? That's not something that we're prepared to answer tonight. Will it be a full schedule, a modified schedule? I can't answer those details tonight, but what I can say is that there'll be more interaction between your child and your teacher. There'll be more whole group time. There won't be six or five and a half hours of instruction straight, but there'll certainly be an increase in terms of that interaction utilizing the technology that we have at our disposal, whether that be mobile classroom. But it'll be easier. The technology will be tighter. And your students will feel as they're as close to being in the classroom as they possibly can be if they choose a remote option. And an in-person option, actually by being in the classroom, there are going to be certain safety guidelines that we're implementing. But we'll be doing it within the spirit of ensuring that not only our students, also our staff members, our teachers, our professionals, our administrative assistants, Mr. Q, making sure that they're safe as well, because when they leave, when they go home, they have families as well. They have other people with whom they interact. And from a community perspective, we want to ensure that whether it's our local community or the community at large where our staff members live, we want to ensure that we're protecting them as well and abiding by their safety and health guidelines by eliminating or at least minimizing the risk of spread of this virus. One of the things I can say is our school nurses have done a tremendous job in gathering more information, participating in statewide calls, not only with Dr. Ben Chan, but also with each other, with their nursing association, really identifying isolation protocols. What do you do when a student tests positive or a staff member tests positive and they've been in school, working through those plans? And we're still receiving guidance on what that will look like. However, we are pretty confident in several of the steps that we would take. Those will be part of what we present next week as part of our in program. So our general expectation is, number one, we're returning to school on September 10th. No question. We didn't close school in the spring. We just moved to a different platform. In September, we're returning to school. It will either be a remote platform or it will be an in-school platform. A lot of families responded to a survey that we had sent out on July 21st, which limited the remote instruction to students who had underlying health conditions relative to COVID-19, or they lived in a household where there were health conditions relative to COVID-19. Over time, over the last week to 10 days, that has not sat well with us. And last Tuesday, July 28th, we had a Listen and Learn session with the Cooperative School Board, which as many of our viewers know, is our secondary schools, our middle school, the high school, and SST. In that meeting, we shared that we believe that the responsibility of educating all of our students falls on SAU 16, and therefore not telling our students that should they choose not to come back because they're uncomfortable or their parents are uncomfortable, just not ready to be in school to go to V-Lax. That's not something that we're proposing. We will be able to provide that remote instruction platform. We want to be able to provide online learning for all of our students should they choose that that's the best course of action. So in the last few days, and as I indicated in an email on Saturday to all of our families, that this assumption of risk, this belief in what people feel is best for their children based on the conditions that are available to them, should be left to the family. I don't know who I am to tell a family what level of risk they should take when it comes to their child. So we believe we have to provide options for families to make choices. So family's going to have the option to choose either remote or in-person. And we're going to do our best to meet the needs of families in either of those two platforms. What they'll look like specifically, we're just not there yet. And they may be different from what families want, and we're all going to have to find a way to move forward with some form of consensus of being able to provide all our resources are going to allow us to, under the very best, safest conditions that we can afford. So that's essentially where we evolved, how our plan has evolved. We believe that with so many people that have worked on this to lay the foundation, that we have a good working knowledge and conversation across all of our districts about what the options are for people, what the key word was, what direction we should be moving in. Everybody's been reading and seeing the news. Options that we make will always be with the best interests of your children, but certainly within that framework of the health and safety of students, staff, and families. That will not waver. And so we'll continue to work towards this. We look forward to bringing more detail next week, as we will for our other school districts beginning next week. And at this time, Mr. Andruski, if there's anything else that you feel that we should be, that we said in previous listening sessions, or that we need to introduce in Brentwood, I think that would be a good time for that.
I think you've covered a lot of information over the last couple of weeks, Dave, and your letter kind of summarized the direction, the change in direction that we've been going. I'm really interested in the hearing. There's a couple of questions already in the chat, Melissa, of people asking questions. I think, Dave, you got into the first question a little bit, but I would love to open it up and hear what the community of Brentwood is seeing, knowing that next Monday is really the time for us to dig in about Brentwood specific questions as we continue to plan.
Great. So with that, Melissa, I think we can turn to your facilitation of the question and answer.
Great, thanks. All right. So the first question, as Chris just mentioned, David, I think that you actually just covered this, but I'm going to read the question to you. It sounds to me we may know more about this next Monday. If a teacher tests positive for COVID-19, are they required to quarantine for two to three weeks? Is their sick leave covered? Do students in their classroom need to quarantine? How many confirmed cases before the school goes to remote learning? How will drop off and pickup work with so many and maintaining distancing? Will notices be sent anytime someone in the school tests positive?
So the beginning part of that, I know I'm not going to put Rebecca on the spot. She's certainly welcome to respond, but I don't want to put her on the spot. Our school nurses have been working on developing these, and we'd like them to be consistent based on the best guidance that they're receiving from the Department of Public Health. Did you want to respond, Rebecca, or if you don't want to?
No, I can. If a staff member is positive, they would have to follow, as of now, rules have been changing, but as of now, they would have to follow the 10-1 rule. So they would have to be out for 10 days since their positive test. And at least, so it would be a minimum of 10 days and at least one day or 24 hours since last fever. And all the other symptoms that they might have have to be improving. They don't have to be gone. Just the fever has to be gone for one full day. That could change. And it used to be the 10-3 rule. Now it's a 10-1 rule. So that will be based on what DHHS tells them they need to do. Same with the student. They will have to follow the same guidelines if they test positive.
That was great. Thanks, Rebecca. I appreciate you jumping up there. And yeah, anytime somebody tests positive, we follow the DHHS rules around that. You would take our guidance from them.
So are we still working on whether or not we would continue to keep the other children in the classroom at school, or are we waiting for guidance on that?
It's my understanding that we're waiting on guidance, and we've been asked to wait on guidance because of how it's changed just in the last week. I think CDC, Rebecca, correct me if I'm wrong, originally was something like 14 days and then a series of negative tests, which now is the 10 and 1.
It could be a series of negative tests, two negative tests, or the 10 and 1 rule, either or. Most people are following the 10 and 1 rule because two negative tests will be a big strain on the testing, and it could take a while to get back. The DHHS also talks about how if we have assigned seating, that way, when they, if they call us to tell us that somebody's positive, it would be easier for us to tell them who was in that cohort, who was close to them, and then they will tell us who needs to be notified and who needs to be excluded or stay at home for 10 days. Or actually, that would be 14 days. So if they were exposed, they would have to stay home for 14 days if they were exposed to a positive case.
Okay. And how will, do we have any idea at this point how drop off and pickup may work?
I don't think that's something that's been worked out just yet. I would look to Mr. Q on that one?
Yeah, I don't want to speak for transportation as far as how buses are going to run. So I'm going to wait to get more information about bus transportation. I know we're encouraging when possible to have as much private transportation drop off. Swayze is fortunate that we do have a very large campus and access all the way around the building to spread out arrival and dismissal times. So I do anticipate arrival and dismissal taking much longer than typical, but to do it in a safe manner. So I do anticipate taking the time to do it correctly and spreading that around the entire building and the campus. So arrivals and departures will look a lot different than last year.
Okay. And then, is will notices be sent home anytime someone in the school tests positive? The way that I interpret it is those that were directly impacted would be notified with a phone call. Is that correct?
So that's typically what the Department of Health and Human Services would do. And I believe we'd follow the same notice that we would for pertussis as we had to three years ago. Does that ring a bell? I was before I was here.
I don't remember it.
Seeing a thumbs up from Esther Asbell that yes, that's what we do.
Okay. Is a notice sent home to the entire school if someone tests positive, though? Or I don't know how that's privacy.
So that's where we'll be getting some more guidance on the notification.
Okay. And I'm assuming too, on how many confirmed cases before the school goes to remote learning, I'm assuming that that's something that's evolving too, and we'll learn more later.
So that actually ties into two questions about testing, and that's work that I did last Thursday with some of our health partners, our consulting physician, Dr. Meehan is the chief physician over at Exeter Hospital, a couple of other caregivers or public health officials who are on the call. Is this notion of testing, we would very much like to make, or at least make available, testing for our families, particularly those who are considering sending their children back to school, as well as our staff members who are interested in teaching inside of our school and coming back to in-class. I'm getting conflicting information. The hospital's saying testing's available for anyone who wants to get it, and that they haven't seen the number of tests that they would like because people aren't coming to be tested. And we shared that the news that we're receiving from PCPs as well as other health officials is testing's being reserved for those who are being directed to it or being told by their doctors to go and get it. So we're still trying to work that out and figure out how we can have a testing program. The Department of Health and Human Services is interested in surveillance testing. But I know that our community health professionals want to establish not just a program to encourage mask wearing everywhere by everybody, but also testing for everyone, so that we can begin to do much naturally what will happen when you do more testing, is you'll see a positive test result rate increase. Presently, we're under a 2%. 5% is the danger zone. Anything over 2%, you become very worried. My understanding is that we have about a 1 and 1 and 1/4% positive test rate at this point in the seacoast region. We'd very much like to keep it below that too. But the more we test, the higher that rate's going to go. And so without having clear direction on how we're going to have people tested, it's hard for us to say that we're going to have a testing component. I can say we'd like to have a testing component. And I think as a community, we'll be able to figure this out. So I think we can look forward to having some form of testing component that will put people at ease with people who are coming inside of our schools.
And I can tell you right now, too, that a couple of the different local urgent care chains are actually providing the tests for anyone that walks in off the street, and the charge is covered by the state as well. It sounds as though the hospital and the PCPs are handling it a little bit differently. The other question I have too, quickly, I had a question, and that was regarding what if someone does not have a fever, but they test positive for COVID-19, at what point may they return?
So I'm going to look to Rebecca for that one, because I'm not as familiar with the specific detail of the plan.
10 days. So as long as, if they didn't have any symptoms at all, it would be 10 days from their positive test. If they had any symptoms, you would want this, even if it wasn't a fever, the other symptoms need to be improving. But 10 days would be the minimum.
And obviously, calendar days, not school days, correct? Okay. The next question is, are you looking at the possibility of live streaming? What's going on in class if that might allow remote students to feel more connected?
We did look into live streaming. We actually priced out live streaming equipment and the technology. We checked out two different companies, and we did a demo with one of them. It would be about $2,000 per classroom. A lot of it is plug-and-play technology, so there isn't any wiring, additional wiring that has to happen. Choose that we have run into, however, is, well, there are a few. One is the comfort level of our teaching staff being videoed over or to homes where they're not certain what's happening with that live video. That's problematic for a lot of our teachers. There are student data privacy policies, as well as RSAs in the state of New Hampshire, that we feel that live streaming in a K-12 setting or a K-5 setting, we would be in violation of those RSAs as well as our current policies. There are steps around the policy where people sign off. So if we're going to do any audio or video recording, we have to have all of the participants in the class, so parents of students as well as teachers, sign a release stating that they can be audio and video recorded, even for instructional purposes. However, what happens on the other end of that is a concern of ours. We're also worried about students who are at home and students who are in the classroom, the expectation of the teacher to try to manage both of those environments with distractions that, as you know, can occur during a normal class time, a routine class time. So there were several issues that arose for us, and we're not comfortable moving in a live streaming format for our teachers. And so that's where we are from a general expectations perspective at this time.
I've also heard feedback that the children feel as though the classroom is a safe environment, and they may speak freely. So if this is being livestreamed into homes, or I know we're not talking about recording, but even recording it, it's not such a safe environment for those children anymore to speak freely, whether it be about questions or maybe privacy issues, because they may have some special needs issues. But my understanding is that there's another whole element to that. I have a couple of questions that kind of piggyback on the original question with the COVID-19 testing. And one was, why wouldn't the return be dependent on a negative test?
That is the state guidelines and CDC guidelines as of right now, and actually it has been all along. You can either have the two negative tests or follow the 10-1 rule.
All right. Thank you. And then you've already touched on this. I just want to be sure to read it. Has the SAU discussed availability of COVID-19 testing and turnaround time for results for student staff in the classroom where there was a student staff person that tests positive? You have addressed this. I just want to throw the question out there since someone put it on. And then the other is just questioning, why is that an issue, live streaming educational material into a home? You've just covered that as well. And actually, as of right now, that is all that I have. I have a comment from someone, and actually, she's an educator in another district, and she is telling us, "Thank you so much for offering a remote option through Swayze. We love the Swayze community and sincerely want our children to still be with the Swayze teachers and their peers. So thankful." So that was very sweet. And then, okay, let's see. I have another one. I know of people who are positive for more than a month. So in that way, it doesn't seem to make sense to let people back without negative results.
And I understand that, and people have had it for a long period of time, but I don't think that we could go outside of the CDC or the DHHS guidelines, because that's what they are saying. If it is a specific case, we would certainly follow DHHS if they said this person is still sick. I don't know of people, I don't know one way or the other, if people who are not showing symptoms have had it for more than a month. So I would think that those people that this person is talking about maybe have had symptoms, and so therefore they might still have a fever or other symptoms that aren't improving. So then that would change, that 10-day would be longer. But if they are improving or if they don't have symptoms, we would go with the 10 days.
So at this point, I am not, I'm just kidding. Are there known certain manufacturers of COVID tests that have accuracy issues, and is there a more reliable test so that they're not false negative positives?
I do not know the answer to that question. That, I think, is a great healthcare question that may be in Rebecca's wheelhouse, but might really be more reserved for, I would think epidemiologists or
Yes, I'd agree.
I would agree as well. Do we have any idea what the in, we have any idea what the in-classroom experience will look like? Circle times, spacing of desks, reading groups, et cetera? Any indication of what we can, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Any indication of, I'm sorry, somebody just sent in a very many questions. All I wanted, it bumped everything.
That was me, Melissa. I'm sorry. Some folks have used the Q and A. So I disabled the Q and A function. I copied the questions and put them in the chat, so we didn't miss them. So I'm asking everybody to please use the chat function and not the Q and A function, okay?
Well, thank you for coming to my rescue on that one. All right. So you heard the question. Do you have any idea of what the in-classroom experience will be like? Circle times, spacing of desks, reading groups, any indication of what we can expect for the children with an in-school option?
I can ask Mr. I, I can ask Mr. Q to respond if he has some initial thinking about that.
Yeah, I sure do. Any of the conversations we've had really rely on the spacing of students. The, the ability for them to share materials is something that we don't think will be possible. So we're thinking about students having their own materials ready at their own seats. As far as reading groups, I think it can be done, but in a much smaller fashion. We, we had conversations about, you know, typically we start our mornings for many, if not most of our classrooms on a carpet. I mean, the carpets will probably removed to provide more spacing, and any kind of group conversations or group meetings will need to be spaced out, perhaps outside. So those types of things we're looking at. I think as far as more than two kids at a very large table with a teacher, we need to, we have to follow the guidelines for spacing and social distancing. So that's true for specials. I mean, typically, our students leave the classroom and go to one space for our art, music, PE library. So the thought at this point is that those types of special classes would be done traveling to the, the one classroom to have a cohort of students remain together. And so there are some things we're looking at and follow those guidelines to limit the amount of exposure to large groups and large spaces.
Perfect. The next one, if I could, I'd like to bring Tom Campbell into this as well. I have received a couple of questions that I feel I'm not completely comfortable with in this venue. I know we're talking about the safety of our students and our staff, but we received a couple of questions regarding compensation for the staff, and I don't know if this is a proper venue for that. I just wanted to get your opinion, Tom.
Thank you, Melissa. What is, which question is it? I see a long list here.
Okay, well, one is if the teacher tests positive, and they're required to quarantine for the two to three weeks, is their sick leave covered? And then there's another one asking about the parents as well. Do parents get paid if they have to be out due to a student in class being sick?
Yep. So two different things would apply. The first would be, the employee certainly has available sick time in their accrual. But more importantly, the Families First Conovirus Response Act provides up to 80 hours, not from an employee's accrual. This is in addition to what they may already have. In the event that they themselves are quarantined because they, a healthcare provider has told them to quarantine, or that they have symptoms, or that they have to care for a family member who also was told to be quarantined, or they have symptoms. So there is a safety net for our employees, and it provides up to 80 hours in addition to anything they already have in their sick time accrual.
And that is nothing that expires anytime soon, or we're waiting to hear from the government? This is, we're good to go for quite a while?
For a little bit. The Families First Conovirus Response Act is by, legislated by Congress, is through December 31st of 2020. So we certainly have up until December, and we will wait to see what Congress does, if they extend that or not extend it. But certainly through December 31st, we know that's available.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I've had some questions where people are asking what outdoor classrooms would look like, or indoors, what it would look like.
So I, I would leave that to Mr. Q if he started that.
The question is, what would it look like if students were to go outside for instruction?
Yes, I've had, what would it look like, number one, for the outdoor instruction? And number two, I've also had questions regarding campus security.
Yeah, so the, what would instruction look like? I, I think it depends on, you know, the, the goal and the purpose for moving to the outdoors. There's some things that lend itself to outdoors, whether it's read aloud, morning meetings, those types of things. So I would imagine a lot of that instruction where you don't need a large amount of materials, or maybe materials that students can bring it, carry outside and bring back in. Obviously, for now, technology type of, and electronics would be better suited for indoors. As far as security, the only thing I would say is, all of our ALICE protocols would, would be in play whether we are indoors or outdoors. So we've always had an outdoor aspect to our school day, and our ALICE protocols would prevail.
And speaking of outdoors, I did receive a question about lunch and recess, and will students be able to eat and play at recess with their friends?
I think that still needs to be worked out. What's going to be the best and safest way for us to be able to allow that?
Okay.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, and for now, plans or for non-lunchroom lunchtimes, whether that's classroom or outside?
Would students be sharing instructional materials in the classroom?
So there are some materials that don't carry the virus, and there are some that do. It would probably be in everyone's best interest to provide their, their own materials, or those materials that we provide. We'll provide individually for students, so they would not be sharing. I think that's the easiest way for us to be able to move through an in-person day. I know in physical education, there are certain materials or pieces of equipment that we're going to need to sanitize throughout the entire day, and others that you won't have to. So there's actually a group of phys ed teachers I've seen on social media that are making lists and trying to figure out, what are those that we'll need to provide individually, and what are those that we can provide as a group? And that's the first time I've seen something like that. But in a class, you know, the different instructional materials that students would normally have, I think, would be individualized.
So we would, would we probably get lists, Ron, maybe a couple of weeks before the start of the school year?
Yeah, I believe so.
David, you just touched on the cleaning material. So I just wanted to touch on that. I know after the co-op and the joint board meetings, there were questions from parents just regarding how often the school might be cleaned, or now they're questioning the safety of certain cleaners, whether it's, you know, an airborne spray, is it too harsh for the children? Or should we be using UV light? Do you, I don't know, I, sorry for catching you off guard. I'm not sure if you're prepared to answer that, or that would be something that we would discuss next week, but I know the cleaning material question has come up quite a bit.
So I haven't, I haven't fielded any questions relative to cleaning material. We're looking at a new mister that doesn't require any wiping or contact that's biologically safe, as well as environmentally safe. Our, so our director of facilities, Rusty Listers, is on top of that, and not only are we looking at using that for our surfaces, but as I alluded to in our work session, there are 10 units, or units in 10 classrooms that are above the ceiling tiles that have been out of service for a little while, that we're replacing, that are going to provide brand-new air circulation, improve their circulation in those classrooms. I believe it's the older wing of the school, Ron. Correct me if I'm wrong. So in terms of providing the circulation that is needed, I'm not certain that that's going to be a concern of ours moving forward. The Clorox electrostatic sprayers that we use for surfaces will be done when students are not in the building. Those will be done in the afternoon and evening when we do what facilities is calling a deep clean on a daily basis. So naturally, when we maximize safety or look to minimize risk for students, we're going to include whatever the cleaning protocols are as well, to make sure that we're delivering on that, staying within that framework. I can't give the exact description of the materials that are being used. What I can say is that facilities is being very careful in what they choose, given the environment where, that they'll be conducting the cleaning, so.
I do want to say too, having sat on a couple of meetings now, over the past couple of weeks with the joint board and the co-op, Rusty has been really, he's really been doing a great job since he took over facilities. I think we're really lucky to have him.
I agree.
The next question is, if you get a negative test back, does a child still need to quarantine? Oh, excuse me, we've answered that one. It was, how will you screen staff daily? And how would you screen students that are not done at home?
So we're going to follow the CDC guidelines of the letter on this. They recommend not screening students, not relying on the school to screen students and staff, because you don't want people coming to school, waiting to be screened, and find you have a test or a positive, or a yes to one of your screening questions, or a high temperature rate after that student or staff member has already been to the school and circulated and interacted with other students and staff. So we're going to follow the CDC guidelines and recommendation that parents screen their children if their child has any of the symptoms on the questionnaire, has a temperature, or just doesn't feel well, to keep that child home. We're going to ask our staff members to do the same. Here in the SAU office, our full staff returned today. They all have to subscribe to the screening questionnaire every day prior to coming to work. And at the front desk, anybody who enters our building who is a guest, they need to come and, with an appointment, they're screened at the front desk, and their temperature is taken at the front desk. We're asking our families to do that. Now, we're also going to ask our school nurse at her discretion that if she feels the need to screen a student because a parent calls, says, "Oh, my God, I forgot to ask my child questions," or so forth, naturally we'll respond to that. But that's one where we really believe that we should be subscribing to what the CDC is recommending, and that's a recent set of guidelines. Rebecca, if they've changed their guidelines on screening in the last 48 hours, please let me know, because we can always change that protocol.
No, that's, that's correct. I think also where, what we've been talking about is maybe an app or something to, to alert the nurses of who has screened and who has not. So we've looked at a few different, different kinds, but if we know in the morning what parents have screened, or hopefully that will jog their memory and, and they'll put it in the app and let us know. That way, we can go and, those of the, the people who didn't screen, we can go and screen them as well. As far as staff members, the Dr. Chan from DHHS is saying staff members need to be screened at the building. So we will hopefully ask them to, you know, screen themselves in the morning and not come to work if they're not feeling well as usual. But once they get to the building, we'll need to screen them, whether that's just asking them a simple, simple couple of questions, or having them initial a form when they get there, saying that they did answer all those questions, and they can take their temperature at that time as well.
Thank you. I have a question. What percentage of teachers are willing to be back face-to-face?
So we don't have that answer yet. We're looking to send that question to our staff members. Now that we've changed and addressed, as we did in our Saturday, Saturday summary to families, that offering remote instruction to any family who wishes to have it. We also want to have our staff members understand that should they not feel comfortable coming back to the building, and if they feel that they should be choosing remote instruction to serve as remote teachers, then we want to give them that opportunity to choose that. And so that's something that we've worked on today. Our expectation is that we have a few questions we're sending to teachers tonight, and we're hopeful that we can have some data back to us by Wednesday, so that we can then plan what our next steps would be, knowing the number of teachers who are asking to teach remotely and in class.
The, the next question revolved around if anyone would be responsible for providing both in-class and remote instruction.
No. No, and we're not, we don't find that to be a sustainable form of instruction for our teachers. I think we're asking our teachers already to do an awful lot, given the conditions that we're in, to provide the very best of either in-class under safety guidelines or remote instruction. I think to ask them to do both is asking way too much, and we're not comfortable doing that with our staff members.
This is just a comment before I go on and I lose it in the thread. Simply, I would like to see the schools getting these more accurate tests than professional sports teams. That was regarding the accuracy of the COVID-19 testing. And then this question states, which we've already asked, you share what's being scored as far as outdoor classrooms? But also, the second part is, using the middle school or high school, should upper grades move to virtual learning?
It's, it's not a bad idea. It's a creative one. It was discussed back in, I think, April, when we were discussing back in April, what return to school was going to look like or could look like. It was certainly something that was on a list of possibilities that exist. We didn't look at it too much after talking about it with our joint board. But that opportunity always does exist because it does spread students out, creates a lot more room. But I have a feeling, based on the feedback we received at the secondary level with the cooperative board meeting, is that there are going to be many families who choose to have their children still attend school. So I'm not certain that that's going to be an option.
If children, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do you mind? There was one question that you thought we had already answered, but it's slightly different. If you get a negative test back, does the child still need to quarantine for 14 days? That's going to depend on why the, why they had the test. If they were sent home because they had symptoms and had a test that day, and it was negative, the state might still say that they need to quarantine or get a test. The, the best time to get a test is three to five days after exposure. So that will be dependent on what, that will be a case-by-case basis. So a negative test does not necessarily mean you can come right back.
Thank you. If children are required to wear a mask full-time, are there times for mask breaks?
I, I would say absolutely that, that, I think that goes without saying that we would want to build in mask breaks for students and staff. I know here at the office, we all, just today, go outside periodically to take our own mask breaks. So yeah, those are one of the, the activities that will certainly be built into the school day for all of our schools. Seems to be standard practice, Melissa.
Okay. What would the typical K-2 reading groups look like, especially K, in learning the phonetic form of letter S?
I think we're talking about moving from typical to atypical, seeing that the numbers will have to be reduced, but no, I, I'm not an expert on masks. I know I've, I've seen some advertised where the, the mask covers the face, but you can see the movement of the mouth and, and lips, especially for our SLP teachers that are supporting students with their speech. So it would be my hope that we can do some of that type of thing. But would want to have the dynamic of having, you know, that small guided reading groups continue, not just K-2, but K-5.
Is the school district able to find certain items that would improve in-person learning and teaching, like portable whiteboards, wireless mic and speaker, and carts for specialists?
Yeah, I think we're always looking at the materials that are going to best help us accomplish the work at hand. So I want to make sure that, you know, like our specialists that will be traveling, we're going to, we need to find a way for them to be able to move from space to space. So we would want to provide those types of things.
Has there been any additional thought on the social emotional support for students related to the sudden absence of teachers, staff, and fellow students, or their own need to isolate due to possible exposure?
So I'm going to ask Chris to answer this one and talk through the plan that we have for how we're leading up to school, and what those first few weeks will look like.
Thanks, Dave. When we did our SAU Institute with 60 teachers and administrators from all of our schools back in July, this was the first thing that we looked at, and we went through an empathy training, a trauma training, because it was the first time we were in a large setting with people that we hadn't seen in a very long time. And all of us were hit with many different emotions, you know, of not seeing someone, being back in a school setting. So there was a lot that filled us as adults for, for the first four hours of training. All of our schools got a wide variety of resources and were trained, and that is going to be part of the professional development we're going to do with all teachers when they return. Over that expanded now, eight days of professional development. So I know schools are working with one another of what the training is going to provide, and also working through that sets of resource lists that was provided to us with our consultant, Two Revolutions. And also working through that sets of resource lists that was provided us with our consultant to revolutions. So each team has their own plan and I know Ron will go into it a little bit more. In depth of what that looks like, you know, first aid for staff, first aid for students, but that will be part of what we are doing with with students. We don't expect on day one that our students are going to come in and we're going to give them an assessment to see where they're at academically. Because we need to connect with them. We need to let them know that it's a safe place and that they're learning and that they're back with with students and their staff members. And we'll continue to educate them on on many different things that come throughout that. So. It's a great question and it's something that all of our schools are prepared for and will be using shared resources throughout the districts.
Mr. Q, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Swayze School is a responsive classroom. Model for social emotional learning and community. We want to continue not only to support our teaching staff in that model, but keep moving forward in that community. I think our teachers did an outstanding job of this in the spring as best under those circumstances. Continue to communicate with our families. All of this is really reliant on. Relationships and and the partnership that you have with the children in your classroom and the families that are at home. So. We're going to keep that line of communication open to the needs of our kids and our staff when it comes to social emotional learning. Again, our 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 teachers and our staff do a wonderful job with this. And I rely heavily on the the caring ways of our of our teachers to get to know our kids. And to support them in a variety of ways, not just instructionally. So. I'm I'm looking forward to the chance to get back together with our staff, reconnect there. And the same thing with our students and our families reconnecting in a way where. We welcome them back into the physical aspect of school. And and support them in that way. So. I appreciate Chris's answer because there is a lot of professional development and. In conversation to have about. What the adults need and then moving forward to support our students when they return.
Thank you, Ron. I have another one, Ron, that I believe you just touched on this. I'm just going to read it in case you have anything else to add. For younger students who are learning to read and pronunciation of words. How will that work with both the students and staff in masks? I believe you still address that, but I don't know if you have anything to add.
Yeah, you know. I think when we're in the building and when we're. When we need to wear our masks, we need to wear them. So to, and again, I'm not. I'm not an expert on these masks that have like a clear plastic covering and if they're as effective as others, but. I would hope that that there's some aspects where we can use some of these types of masks and make those available for our teachers.
How long do we realistically think we could hold outdoor class sessions? Given fall/winter temperatures and precipitation, this seems like a limited option.
Yeah, we go out all year round. We go out on lessons dangerous and I know the amount of time and 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 weather related, so. I think we do the best that we can without without shelter out there. But in, you know, in the in the winter months, I know we had several classes that went out year round, even all the winter for. For their snack time, definitely for their recess time. So we're outdoors quite a bit at our school.
I think, yeah, as long as they have the appropriate gear and dress, they could be good to go out for limited amounts of time and have a break or do some learning throughout the year. The next one is with all the scientific information about the wearing of masks. Why would all student and staff wearing masks be a question?
I don't think it is. I think we've covered the fact that it's going to be a non-negotiable that we're wearing masks. I think. I think Ms. Brown is just kind of reiterating our point.
Okay. If we start the year remotely. Will there be an opportunity for students to meet their teachers in person? Maybe in small groups to make the initial contact and potentially potentially complete typical beginning of year assessment?
So one of our guiding questions on a remote. Instruction or full start or full remote instruction. Or if that platform is what families choose. Is to provide some form of safe in-person connection. Maybe in small groups of students, outdoors. Or in small space or or large spaces where the teacher can meet. With his or her students in person. To establish at least what does it look like? What do I look like? What do you look like without being on on screen? And then. Maybe even being able to do that periodically outdoors through the fall. To do some small group check-ins in person just to. Just to get past this this square that's in front of me. So. Hallie also being a pretty top-notch educator in the Exeter School District. Probably heartened to hear that. Because I know that that's something that she would be advocating for. And I think a lot of our teachers would also be advocating for that. So. Our goal isn't to say, no, that wouldn't happen. Our goal is to say, yeah, let's figure out a way to make that happen.
What if a teacher is quarantined several times in a year? The eighty hours would cover one event.
So I would ask Dr. Campbell if he has thoughts on that.
So this is a good question. The federal government has not provided guidance on that. I would, my short answer is the teacher would. Or paraprofessional or any staff member would have their sick time accrual. That would be available, but the federal government has not addressed a repeat. They just provide the eighty hours for quarantine.
And this is something where staff could reach out to you directly, correct, Tom? If they have further questions?
Absolutely. I would encourage them to call my office. My email is quite backlog, but I'm. Able to keep up with my phone a little bit better.
Okay, thank you. At this point in the call, I think that I'd like to continue with questions that we have not answered, but. Some of these, I think we've covered a couple of times already. If we have not, please stop me, David or Ron. This one is are there guidelines in place of a student or staff member test positive? I think we've covered this a couple of times with Rebecca. Do we feel that this has been covered or do we need to go any deeper?
I believe we've answered that. And Rebecca, if you'd like to further.
I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Is the district looking at getting a Chromebook in the hands of each child?
So. The the plan moving forward, we will be one-to-one with Chromebooks in grade three, four and five next year. In K to two, we are not assigning Chromebooks or specific iPads. But they are available within the school. We did work with our families last year. When there was some demonstrated need for us to support them with a device during remote learning last year. So grade three to five.
Okay. So I'm going to also skip to this question because I'm going to say you just covered it, but I'm just putting it out there. While students paying up have their own computers, Chromebooks that they're expected to use each day. And if I heard you correctly, three, four and five will be one-to-one. The other students know, and I'm assuming if we go remote, that would be a different situation. Would you say that's correct, Ron?
It'll be a case-by-case basis as far as people that are looking for support for devices.
Okay. And then what is the policy if teachers choose not to participate in face-to-face classroom teaching? For example, substitution policy, et cetera?
They'd be teaching remotely.
Thank you. I understand that HVAC filters that have a M E R V sixteen are ninety percent effective in trapping coronaviruses. I'm assuming this is just a statement. Can you please make the next survey available after we learn more details about the plan, particularly after more logistical planning is completed?
That is our intention.
As far as kids with food allergies, how does eating in the classroom look and what plan do we have in place to protect these children? They're also asking how will the teacher know if the child is having allergic reaction? If the child is wearing a mask after eating, most reactions start in and around the mask.
So the response from Jean Pierce, who's our Director of Food Service for the Cooperative as well as for Swayze Central School. Says we're going to work with each parent to meet the needs of the special dietary needs of the student. We just need to make sure that we have the proper documentation to support their requests. So. In terms of meeting the needs in terms and a allergy or foodborne allergy. We would have to take it on a one-by-one or individualized basis.
And I can speak about that, too. The teachers are really good at at. Washing the areas in their room when they have, especially kindergarten, they're. They eat in their room a lot or other grades have snack in their room. So. It's not, this isn't something new. They've all done this before and. For one, yes, they will have their masks off while they are eating. But if they do have a reaction later on in the day when the mask is on. That is something that we we go over every year before school starts. We do a little training with teachers and. Review different signs to look for. So that will definitely be something in this year's review that we'll talk about. You know, how else you can tell an allergic reaction other than just looking at the lips and and the mouth. So we will discuss that. And anybody who has any students with allergies or any. Other medical needs can certainly reach out to me if you haven't already and we can discuss that like. Dr. Ryan said on an individual basis.
Thank you. So regarding this next question, Rebecca, you just touched on this. And that was about, oh, well, a little different. Will students be allowed to take off their mask when they're less than six feet apart? For example, if they're eating lunch in the classroom, will they be less than six feet apart? So I heard you respond, they would take off their mask while they're eating. But it looks to me as though the question is, are they going to be eating lunch in a space, you know, where they're less than six feet apart?
I think the goal is to have everybody six feet apart. That's the. The recommendations, Dr. Fauci's recommendation. The state, New Hampshire, DHHS says three to six feet. Is is okay, three, three feet is okay, six feet is better. And I think that would be our goal would be to have everybody be six feet apart, at least with masks off.
That's great. Thank you. How will we provide substitutes that are trained to work under these circumstances?
I'd ask Tom Campbell to answer that for us.
Thank you. So we have currently a survey out to all of our substitutes. We have not tallied the data at this point in terms of. The substitutes that are willing to work, the substitutes that feel like they need to take a break and they will come back at a later date. But we will be providing training to all of our substitutes. If we're, if, you know, many students could be in a remote learning environment, in which case substitutes will not be necessary, but clearly the teachers and. Educators that are returning to the building, you know, may be sick and need to take a sick day. We will look at that on a case-by-case basis, but substitutes will be trained. If they are indeed being asked to cover in one of our school buildings.
Perfect. Thank you. I do have, I have a couple of questions. I know Dr. Ryan had asked some that you had mentioned were on the thread. I have a board member that is not able to get onto the thread. So this is where some of the questions have come from. It's can we ask if teachers will be encouraged to keep classroom windows open?
They certainly can open their classroom windows. I'd recommend they don't if they have air conditioning, however.
Okay. Alright, so we have some comments about the masks, which we have discussed. Some more comments about the filters. And then let's see, will the school be developing curriculum for teaching the students about COVID and proper health safety guidelines given the change in routine and expectations?
Well, let me just address MERV thirteens, the filters that people are referring to are actually eighty-five percent. They, well, they restrict more than eighty-five percent of of the. Contaminants that are coming in through. And so that's something that we've already moved to. They're expensive. But the facilities department has invested in ordering. Those filters as well as the HEPA-filtered vacuum cleaners. So that, you know, air filtration is on our mind. It is something that we're working on. It is one of the layers, one of the many. Safety layers that we have. It's not the only one, but. These are all. Things that everybody has read or heard about in the news that they're asking questions about. We're doing all of them. They're not. Anything, there's nothing out there that's been recommended that we're disregarding. So. I want to make sure everybody understands that.
Okay.
As. The question regarding curriculum for teaching students about COVID. I'm going to defer that to Mr. Andruski. And Mr. Q, I know Katie Gallo is on the call. I don't think there's been a lot of thought about that. Granular detail about curriculum. But I'll leave it to them to respond to as best they can.
Let me, let me just chime in. I appreciate other people's opinions. I think what's developmentally appropriate for a kindergartner and a fifth grader are completely different. I think when we set expectations for students. In our typical school year, we talk about all scenarios of our school life together. And some of the, some of the expectations and guidelines for our classrooms. You know, we can work together on and some of them are handed down for safety reasons. So. Developmental conversation about what it is that we're doing in our schools to keep ourselves safe. I think these are conversations we've had during all sorts of flu seasons in the past, but obviously this is. At a more extreme case as far as. Health and wellness for our students and the education about the science behind it. And again, those conversations differ. For students from K to five across the board.
Thank you. I have another, I have a question for you. Actually, this has nothing to do with David and I apologize to everyone else out there who's listening because I want to respect your time as well. But I have a parent that is messaging me. They're frantic because. They can't get on. They're saying that somehow the link took them to Brentwood, New York. I don't, I don't know what they're doing wrong. They're saying that they used Mr. Q's link. Is there any way that I can get them on another way? Or do you have any suggestions I can get this parent on? I know they're equally as concerned as everyone else on the call.
What we encourage everybody in the SAU to do is use the sau16.org website. Down on the bottom. When you hover over information, you can find board info. Go to the Brentwood School Board page. You can find the posting, the agenda. And in the posting is the live link that all of our. All of our over one hundred participants have used to arrive here. So. Our postings are always on the board webpage, so they're welcome.
And this is recorded anyway, correct?
Yes, it is. And we're hopeful to have it up as soon as it's done.
Alright, perfect. Thank you. I apologize for the interruption, everyone. Okay. What accommodations are being considered for staff that may have underlying conditions or staff that may live with someone with underlying conditions?
So I think we've answered this. We're, we're offering our staff members the opportunity to teach either remotely or in person.
Okay. I believe that we've, we've discussed the shields versus masks. I don't know. I guess maybe it was more in terms of younger kids learning. Their reading and speech, but did we have any further discussion on shields versus masks?
No, there just continues to be. Discussion amongst the public health officials about. The correct use of shields and their eye protection, not necessarily protection against an airborne virus like COVID. So there's an ongoing debate about using shields in classrooms. However, there are really smart people out there that are creating. Masks that are clear that you wear over your mouth that people can then see. So that students who are hard of hearing, who can read lips, will be able to participate safely, just like everybody else. So. That continues to be a conversation that's that we're paying attention to.
Okay. Do you have a plan to support the IPs if we choose remote learning? Would it be similar to services provided in the spring, which were great?
I think Ms. Riss would love to answer that.
What makes you say that, David? Yes, I would. Yes, I'm glad that the parent, that person feels that their services were great in the spring. Certainly, everybody was, as we keep saying, building the plane as we were flying. But we were very fortunate. We have some talented staff and they really dug deep and.
But we were very fortunate. We have some talented staff and they really dug deep and came up with some innovative ways to reach kids. We learned a lot from that time. We learned what we weren't able to do and we've been working through the summer actually to try to. Rectify and come up with some new ways to reach those students who are the most difficult to reach for a variety of reasons. And we are hoping that when we go remote, because we feel we probably will. That we have some good plans in place for all districts, Brentwood included. So if you have any specific questions or concerns, I would urge you to get ahold of your case manager or Mr. Q or even myself and be happy to help you work through that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Welcome.
The next question, I'm going to elaborate that on that a little bit, too. What happens to the in-class students if their teacher decides to teach remotely? I, I'd like to add to that, too, since we, since families have already received their class assignment. I'm assuming is that subject to change then moving forward?
Absolutely. This plan is so fluid, things could change between now and the beginning of school, which means. Teachers that are students that have been assigned to classrooms, if they choose to teach remotely. May or may not have that teacher that they've been assigned to as their remote teacher. So really depends upon. The pool of teachers who are choosing to work remotely and the pool of teachers who are choosing to work in class. That's where the numbers. Need to add up for everything to work, which is why this is a really, really hard thing to offer.
In regards to special education services, will cohort groups be put together in a way that services can be streamlined, equitable and manageable for service providers?
That's definitely the hope is, you know, look at where students are placed and now as was just discussed, might be different from what people know right now. And just look at what teachers are on site or what teachers are doing remote and matching kids up. The most efficient and productive way for everyone to learn.
Perfect. Okay, I think, yeah, I think we're starting to get into many VP questions. I can see a couple here that we've covered. Will the school consider providing P E P E to staff or would they reimburse staff for the P P E purchase?
So anything that we ask. Let's separate that, right? So our school nurses, we've asked them to inventory their own P P E. Industry standard P P E for their office space. That's going to be provided for them as we would provide any supplies that they would normally need. Because one of the difficulties that we've run into is that back in the spring. With our, our hospital, our long-term care facilities, we're screaming for P P E. And our schools so graciously provided their P P E to the, those facilities. Well, now we need it. So we'll be providing and outfitting our nurse's office with, with that equipment. As far as the standard P P E that classroom teachers are going to be wearing, we're having sanitizing, wipes, gloves, masks. Those are all going to be provided for them, obviously at no cost. We've already put in a central order here. For instance, one hundred and fifteen thousand disposable masks for students and staff who need them when they come to school. We did ask our, our families if they would be able to provide masks for their children. Ninety-two percent have indicated that they would. We're, we're not suspecting that that number is going to hold. However. We wanted to ensure that we had enough P P E for our students as well as our staff members. So. It won't be something that's going to cost our teachers anything out of their pocket.
Very nice. Is there a deadline for when teachers will decide if they are teaching remotely?
So we're asking our teachers to give us an indication in a couple of days. Again, it's a non-binding survey. We're hopeful that they can weigh their situation and answer in the best way that they can. Knowing there's still so much time between now and the beginning of school. I can't say if there is going to be a deadline. But I think working together will find a way to make this happen without having to set a hard and fast deadline.
So at this point, it looks to me as though all of the questions that are there. Some of them are, have been asked previously and answered some two and three times, I believe. I just want to say thank you to everyone who tuned in for tonight. Really appreciate it. I think we've received a lot of great feedback. Will we meet again next Monday to give you further feedback as far as what's come out of this or any plans we have for the fall? But David, I want to ask you, do you have anything else that you want to summarize for anyone that tuned in late in terms of. You were planning to send out another survey or just anything along those lines before we wrap up this portion of our meeting?
I, I think I just want to say thank you again for the patience that everybody is showing us. A lot of great questions. You can tell there are patterns and themes that emerge when you have overlapping questions. I also want to ask our parents also continue being patient with people who work in the schools, who are putting together plans. With people on our team who are trying to come up with the best approach to. What feels like a wave that just continues to crest and fall. Nobody in this SAU created COVID-19. Nobody created the danger of the transmission and the results of the transmission. Everybody's trying to respond with life as normal in this pandemic. That's all everybody is trying to do. And so by being patient and tolerant with everybody, whether it be someone's opinion, someone's criticism. Whether it be constructive or otherwise, I'm just asking people to please be kind in how they're responding to each other. We know we're all at its end. I have not had much sleep, nor has anyone on our staff. This keeps us awake at night trying to figure out how to keep children safe and staff members safe. With an expectation that we still deliver at a really high level. That's a lot of responsibility and that's a lot to deal with in something that no one's ever gone through before. So. We're asking for some kindness with how we're being responded to in certain areas. And so we're going to get there. We're going to do it together. We're still taking information and we're weighing it. With, with creating the best possible plan that we can, that everybody can work in, even though not everybody is going to be happy with it. So I would just part with that, Melissa.
Thank you, David. And I'm seeing some thank yous that are out there and I saw someone just put out there asking. If whatever comes out of this, will there be a final decision or approval by the Brentwood School Board? Now, this is my opinion and you've all heard me say it before. As a chair, I'm just a facilitator. I'm one of five votes, okay? So take it for what you will. But in my opinion. I think the central office, the senior leadership team has done a great job at this point. I think that they are being in touch with everyone that they need to be out there, whether it be. Anyone from the state or Health and Human Services. So I'm assuming that probably, I would hope that we're probably going to adopt. Anything that you would suggest because you've been doing so much hard work and research at this point in time. And I think that also it would probably be very important that we stay consistent with the rest of the FAU. So I think ultimately, yes, that the board would have a say, but we're all just a team. So, thank you.
Agreed. And I have saved the chat so that we're able to get to any questions that, that we weren't able to answer. We'll add to our frequently asked questions list on the website that aren't already there. Several of these may already be on that FAQ document, but. We'll be sure to update it so that all of the questions here, no one goes unanswered. So that's our goal.
So even, even though this part of the lesson, the listen and learn is over. Part of me feels like, oh, I should just tell parents, you know what, like your part's done if you want to go, but I'm just so excited to actually have this many people here at a board meeting. Hopefully it might just stay on a little bit longer. So our next piece of business is the financials and it's actually the financials for last year ending June thirtieth, simply because we've begun so. It's just so early in this school year that we really don't have a lot of expenses yet. But Molly, you're welcome to take it.
Sure.
Listen, before she goes on, can we let the rest of the senior leadership team that doesn't have a part to play, like Dr. Campbell and Molly. The ability to leave since we've got four more of these this week and I don't want them burnt out by Thursday. So.
Oh, my goodness.
Helen, Ellen, Esther, if they could be excused, that would be fantastic.
I saw Helen waving and it just went right over my head. I'm sorry. Yes, have a good night.
Sorry, Molly. Thank you.
Alright.
Guys, if you see me jump off, I'm going to make Chris a co-host so that you can finish this meeting. I love spending time with Swayze. It's bringing back great memories from my first year. But again, I have something every night this week regarding this, so I apologize in advance. So Chris, I'm going to make you a co-host and then I'm going to sign off. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Alright, we ready? So for the financials, the second page that was provided in the board pack earlier this week. We're showing a projected unreserved fund balance of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And that is taking into consideration. The move of the retirement from FY21 into FY20 to make room for COVID. And then just keep in mind, the first forty thousand of that will go to the warrant articles that was voted in March. So that would bring the return, the projected return to the taxpayers to eighty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars. And again, it's still projected because as we finish out things and close out all of the purchase orders for the fiscal year. Did anyone have any questions? In the pack, we did provide all the reports regarding the revenue, regarding the costs and regarding. Items that don't show on the cost report that we have to take into consideration, like the retirement. And so all the numbers, I put notes on the right-hand side where you'd see the numbers where it says. See financial summary, that that's the cost report that you're used to seeing in each board pack. See page two, that's where we calculated the food service loss and the. The retirement, because it doesn't show on the financial. And then the revenue is page three.
Thank you, Molly. Does, does anyone have any questions for Molly? No. Perfect.
Thanks, guys.
So the outside learning space, we were able to discuss a little bit during our work session. But Chris, I just want to touch base with you, just so the public knows that you had a chance to look into an outdoor classroom. And it was looking at about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. For a one thirty by forty classroom that would house about twenty-five students and a teacher. Is that correct?
That is correct, Melissa. That came out of a conversation we had in our June meeting, looking for alternatives. And one, we wish, we wish we would have gotten that quote sooner, but. The construction business right now is booming and to get even someone out to the site took multiple days and calls. So that was an initial quote and we obviously tried to build on that if that was the direction that the board went.
Okay, thank you. And for anyone that missed it during our work session, we did let Mr. Q know that. That if the teachers need anything for an outdoor space, whether it be canopies or that sort of thing. The board, we're here to support you, Ron, so just let us know. Okay? Next would be the HVAC ventilation upgrade.
Yes, so provided a quote for you. When we were looking at, you know, returning, one thing that we need to do is we need to upgrade the ERVs. Systems in the ten classrooms in the old section of Swayze. And originally, we thought it would be close to two thousand dollars per classroom. However, the overall quote came to about twenty-seven thousand dollars and by upgrading these exchange. Recovery ventilations will give the proper ventilation above and beyond so that we're protecting against the COVID spread. And any type of aerosol form within those classrooms. Right now, they do not have that capability and it would not be. Not be a learning space that we'd want kids to, kids or staff to enter because of the deficiencies in the air circulation. So. It's recommended, I did tell Melissa, we have it on order and once it's approved by the board to get it. We can get it installed before the first day of school. So we have it ready. We're just, if the board says no, then we'll have to do a little bit differently with planning, but. On that time crunch.
Thank you. So with that, I'm looking for a motion, please. For us to spend the twenty-seven thousand dollars, please, to bring these classrooms up to the safety standard.
I'll make the motion, Melissa.
Thank you, Allison. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Scott. Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Are we comfortable voting?
I just have a question. As far as where the monies are coming from, are we directing that out of. Maintenance funds or how will we? I know sometimes we discuss where, where we're paying it from. So I didn't know if we had a discussion around that.
If I didn't hear a motion, we would take it out of our facilities projects fund, which would decrease that portion. So I think it's a great question, Scott, and I don't know if there's a recommendation if we take it out of our trust because it's unforeseen. But in this time, it's definitely necessary. So I would welcome either way. If the board is comfortable taking it out of our current budget for under facilities, we could do that as well. But that would just, that would leave us, you know, with some other concerns.
Chris, can I ask a question about that then? So for the maintenance funds, are there restrictions? I'm just like, we're seeing like there's going to be, you know, more costs related to, you know, supporting Ron and the teachers and whatever we need to do to make this happen this year. Are there restrictions on the types of things that we can use the maintenance fund for? Where I would imagine this falls into that area and it would be easy to use versus. I don't know, other things that might run off my dashboard.
I would have to read it exactly what the fund says, but I would, I do know that it is for school enhancements. This is definitely increase and enhance your school functionality for student learning. So it would fall under that category. I don't have the specific wording, though, Allison, but that's a great question.
So is it possible? Oh, go ahead, Allison.
Oh, I was just gonna say, my gut instinct would be to use the maintenance fund.
Right.
So just, I just want to throw this out there to all of you, just little food for thought. Is it possible for, it's very early on in the year, so we, we don't know how things are going to pan out as far as our budget is concerned. I'm wondering if we take it out of facilities right now. Because at some point, I'm not sure, would we qualify, Chris, possibly for any grants or reimbursements through the government? For this being something that we really needed to do to be safe with COVID-19 and/or. Kind of just see it through the year and if we really need to take money out of the maintenance fund, out of the trust fund, do we do that? Can we do a wait and see? And for anyone else that is listening. The maintenance trust fund is that trust fund that we have, that we vote on at the school district meeting every year that we ask to put in ten or twenty thousand in. So to replenish that money is a very big deal because we have to do a separate warrant article. We go before the town and we ask for permission. So that's why I'm throwing it out there. If it's something that we could consider taking out of our facilities for now and a kind of a wait and see.
Molly, I would ask for your guidance on that. If we can do a wait and see and take it now out of facilities and if we were running into. The deficit in that facilities line, that we could move it to a trust fund.
Yeah, you can do it that way. I just, I just don't think you can do it the other way.
Right, exactly.
I'll double check and read the, the, the actual fund documents, but. Michelle, you don't see any reason we couldn't do it? Yeah.
And to answer your question, Melissa, there's been a lot of things going out there, but not really facilities related in towards a grants. That we, I have seen across my desk and Molly or Michelle, if you have, please, please chime in, but there's been very little into regards to facilities upgrades. It's more about the P P E. Technology and student learning rather than facilities at this point.
So I just worry that our, our savings account, so to speak, the trust funds, I feel like they're kind of sacred and I really only like to dip into them. If we absolutely need to. So if we were to need to really dip into them and make that transfer later in the year. I would absolutely support it, but I would ask the board to possibly consider that right now we take it out of facilities and see how things land. Do we have any other opinions on that?
I, the, we have had in the past, I've had boards recommend that the decision be made later. And that is acceptable. Usually if you word it that you wait to see what your position, your financial position is at the end of the year. We can make that decision in April or May and that is acceptable.
Thank you, Michelle. So Allison, you had made, you had made the motion, Alex, excuse me, how, again, my son. And, and Scott, you had made the second. Are you comfortable with that wording in the motion or no?
I'm comfortable with the wording. So it would be that we pay it out of facilities for the time being. I'm comfortable with the wording, so it would be that we pay it out of facilities for the time being, but, you know, revisit it later in the school year to ensure that the facilities line has enough money, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I agree. I just worry about the unforeseen costs with, with all of the unknowns that we have coming down the line, because we just, we just don't, we don't know, so, but I'm fine with the wording as it is right now.
And I don't disagree with you all, I just, in the back, I'm just, what if, what if, I don't know, I'm assuming we won't, but what if hypothetically speaking, this winter, we did two months remote during flu season, and we saved on busing or something, and oh, there's our money, that's all, that's what I was hoping. So thank you, alright, so we have a motion and a first. I need to do a roll call because we're on Zoom, so Brian?
Hi.
Okay, Scott?
Hi.
Bad?
Hi.
Allison?
Hi.
And I'm an, I'm an I as well, so that's unanimous. Thank you, thank you, everybody. And thank you, Chris, for having, because Chris figured all this out, and he went ahead and had it ready to go. If we were to say yes to this, they're ready to start tomorrow. If we said no, we said no, but if we said yes, he's ready to start tomorrow, so things will be done in time for the school year, so thanks, Chris.